...area of our city. But as all of you know, there are many streets throughout this city that still need to be improved. And that's why we are, one of the reasons why we're looking at the restructure. But this refinancing is not designed to go beyond the indebted level. This will bring it back to its original level and at a lower interest rate and keep the payments basically the same. And that savings will be realized and we'll be able to get the, uh, get it up front and use it for street paving. The city manager?
One clarification on the $100,000. When we did the agreement with IRS, we even knew at that time, when we noted it to IRS, that was going to be very challenging to make that $100,000 payment in August, which is a time of the year when the city has no revenue. So, we knew that, they knew that, that there may be a problem on that $100,000 payment. We indicated that at the time. They also indicated to us we had issues to come back to them at the appropriate time, which we did, and told them that that was going to be a challenge because that's the time of year where there's no revenue flowing in the city, in July, June, July, August. So, they were on notice that we were going to come back. We did go back as we had indicated to them and expressed to them that we were able to make our monthly payments, but anytime you have to make a $100,000 payment at one time for a city, uh, situation in Tuskegee is in, that's going to be a challenge. So, we did make the request and they did work with us accordingly to try to put a plan in to deal with that once a year, $100,000 payment.
Okay. So, next, uh, thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, did any other council members have a question?
Just one.
Oh, please, okay.
As a chief financial officer of this city, do, would you recommend that this would be a good financial move for this council to make at this time?
Which one? Where, uh, which one?
I'm talking about the refinancing of gasoline.
Of gasoline, yeah.
Yes, I think it would be a good, uh, good move at this point.
Thank you.
Can you speak up, please?
You say yes.
I say yes.
As a matter of fact, uh, what, a point of special privilege, would you please come up, young man? Introduce yourself. And this is for the information of the public. We just happen to have, um, a financial legal advisor here. Would you give your opinion representing, uh, what's, what's the name? Brandon Comer is the principal, but what's the name of your firm?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Edward Norwood, Comer Capital Group, out of Jackson City. What we are, uh...
And let me just preface, this is not in order to give you any type of advantage in our consideration, but, but this is your area and since you're in the house, we're going to put you to work to explain to our citizens the advantages and disadvantages in your framework.
Okay. Where?
This is one of those three public members.
What?
This is one of the comments.
No, no, no. This is a point of special privilege since we have, I want to inform the citizen if you don't mind. This is public information. Go right ahead. And he can do it.
Edward Norwood, Comer Capital Group, out of Jackson City. What we are, we're a minority on financial advisory firm that assists cities, counties, school districts, any government or project government agency, acquire funding, refinance debt, economic development plans, usability plans, et cetera. So, our job is to assist our clients in actually finding the best structure to meet their current needs. Uh, talked with Mayor Ford, uh, actually about a month ago, realized that there was some opportunities for you guys to save some money on your 2007 gas and tax warrants. Those warrants were originally issued in 2007 for about 1.1 billion dollars. At the time, those rates ranged, it was a 15-year deal, a 20-year deal at the time, with interest rates ranging from 3.85% up to 4.25%. Rates right now are a lot lower than they were in 2007, which agrees to be a good opportunity for the city to, in essence, refinance that debt and save some money. We believe if you were to refinance that debt today, assuming that we can get those, that debt with the double A or A rated, you can take that rate about 4% down to less than 3%, making saving the city some money. In addition to doing that, uh, you actually have, have you guys, I know the mayor who's been doing increasing the streets, uh, finding money to increase streets. What you can, what we looked at doing was to, in essence, match what you're paying out right now. You're paying out about $100,000 a year. The gas wants to pay out $100,000 a year of principal interest on 2007 warrants. So, if you want to keep that $100,000 payment the same, uh, moving forward, you can actually get about $350,000 approximately right now for street improvements. The good and bad of this transaction. Good, rates are now at historic lows and everybody knows that. It's been on the news. However, most people think that rates are going to start ticking up in 2013. The question is how fast will those rates tick up? If I could tell you the answer to that, I would be in front of the day. However, realizing that rates are low now, city has needs to actually get money for financial debt as well as keep your, keep your payments the same. It's a good opportunity to go through with your project. That's a pilot road. You have to be happy to take questions.
Okay? Any questions from the council? He is an expert. This is what he does every day, advising cities. Does, is that any citizen who have a question? Okay, county, hey, introduce your name.
Sure. Edward Norwood.
And then, Edward Norwood.
Have you looked at the overall financial position of the city in terms of the total body of deadness and other outstanding responsibilities of the city?
Uh, yes and no. Uh, I know you got, well, there's two parts to it. One, the only obligation, the gas act is what I've been primarily focused on. I know you guys are looking at doing some little applications, some general fund application, but my primary focus was actually on the gas act and that provides the whole state to this time for the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Your mic.
Just pick up.
Okay. Sorry. Clear. Okay, great, good. All right. Councilor Moon, you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions for, uh, Mr. Norwood at this time.
Okay. And the councilman, Whitehead?
I don't have any questions for him right now, but I'd like to sit at this and support that, that you reiterate what you said.
Sure. And as I said, he's, he's a legal advisor and they are the ones who actually brought it to our attention. This is what they do. They step in the market and cities. So, thank you, and this does not give you any advantage. Is there any other financial advisor in the city in, in here tonight? We'll hear from them as well. Is Russo been to you? Yeah, Russo gave us his opinion.
Mr. Norwood, our gas tax already up. Oh, it is helping us. Get that. Our gas tax already up. Yeah, get that. Deal with that gas rate.
Well, uh, what happens is calculations actually base, yeah, it's a little bit different. The calculations based on tax rates based on state based on population. There's a, I don't want to go into details of how it's calculated phase.
I'm just asking my question. It helps.
Excuse me, excuse me. Uh, we've been doing...
It would help, it would.
Can you, uh...
It would hurt the city.
Why don't you go ahead, Ms. Noah, and please answer this question.
You don't have our money here and help.
Oh, that's, yeah, what, what happens is you guys, you guys are already getting allocation, you're getting allocation from the state already based on your population. So, that money's already in, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Norwood stopped by your head.
Really noticed.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Norwood? Would you, would you be available in, what, what do you want, executive session or after? Wait, anytime.
Would you be available to come and work sessions? Okay, we're right at the whole pitch. Appreciate, thank you for the information.
Great. And they are recorded in Montgomery as well. He's from Jacksonville and Montgomery as well. Okay, sir?
Uh, I want to ask Mr. Clean City over, did I come back? Uh, my question was on Clean City, uh, Mr. Edward, you was talking about, you was talking about, uh, doing the recycling. Yes, we are scheduling during the recycling, the second or third part of Montgomery, I mean of our new year.
Am I out of order?
Uh, no, no, uh, let's see how you and the two of you are going along.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I think you misunderstood me about recycling. I never go into recycling, okay? What I was speaking of, uh, Councilman Haygood brought up about TVs and appliances. Okay, TVs you cannot put in a landfill. City manager knows that. You have to pay to dispose of your TVs. Your computers have to be, uh, disposed of. You have to pay $5 for that. And refrigerators, the city manager knows this, each refrigerator right now bring about $11 to $12 if you care to the scrap place. So, I think what we need to do as a community, it put the information out there where all these rumors and all this other stuff are taking place. I've been speaking of this for four years, cut down on the rumors and misunderstanding. Now, the other thing I was talking about recycling, just did it last week at Montgomery. We take in your old checks and all your paperwork and we grind it up. You can sit right there and watch it. Doesn't cost you a penny. The university would be glad to pick it back on you to get rid of all papers and stuff that you have in your home. All you have to do is contact me. I make one phone call. We have the publicity for a month in the newspaper where people in Tuskegee will know. The last one we had two years ago, okay? We only got 3,000 pounds out of Tuskegee because people didn't know anything about it. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
So, are you two satisfied? Did he answer your question?
What I was trying to tell you was that...
You two might...
Same thing he was talking about doing, we did two years ago, we're going to do the same thing again.
Okay.
That's what I was saying.
Good, good.
All of her recycling.
Okay, good. So, ladies, you heard from the two chairman of clean committees. I know Mr. Dothan, Edward, at one point was, was serving the city in that capacity or at least helping us. Thank you for what you're doing, both of you. Yes, ma'am?
Mayor Ford, council... Mayor Ford, council, city manager and staff. God bless you all this evening. I have, uh, four questions. One is, uh, could somebody tell me what's the latest on the budget? Uh, who would I find out about what was ever decided about the budget? And then, the other one is, we're just talking about Clean City. On here, it says discussion item, open containers. What, does that mean like clean up open containers? Is that, or is that bottles? What is that?
No, no, that's alcoholic beverages.
Okay.
May be, um...
Thank you.
That may be consumed and enjoyed or utilized in public and public functions, uh, festivals like downtown Montgomery has a jewelry.
I understand. Thank you. And then, uh, the third one is, uh, will I be able to say something about the, um, legend, about the landmark and the liquor? Will I be able to come up again? Okay.
During the public hearing.
And then, the other thing is, uh, what's, I don't know what the latest is on the web, the webpage for the city.
Good point.
Uh, I'd like to, you know, if it's not anytime real soon, could, I'd like to ask, is there any way that we could put special meetings, just like we have the regular meetings on the Marquise? I mean, I read it in the paper, but sometimes the special meetings might have to within 24 hours or 48 hours.
Yes.
And instead of coming inside and looking or calling, uh, can we do that?
Yes, the webpage, uh, is a great, great suggestion. Right, we should... Councilman Lee, you want to respond?
No, I think that's a great suggestion. Um, we have to improve communication with the citizens in every aspect. Um, I think that's one area that, you know, we, we can definitely do a better job in. Um, it's hard for me to keep track of a lot of these special meetings sometimes myself. So, I know it would, it would be helpful in the best interest of the citizens if we start putting those up. As far as the website, um, I know that, that, that is underway and I would like to, to be a part of that. And we'd like to take all citizens' suggestions, um, on that matter, what you'd like to see on the website. Um, one thing I'd like to see, and I see we have a Tuskegee virtual over here, I'd like to see, uh, every city council meeting recorded and broadcasted live on the internet through services like Ustream. So, people that can't come out to the meetings, they can watch from home and, you know, citizens can just be more informed in general. Um, the ultimate goal is to get our local access channel back up and running, um, Channel Six to the level that it was. Um, and when we do that, we can have every meeting, you know, listed on that channel. We can have them broadcasted and, you know, I think that working with Tuskegee University is probably the best way to, to get that done. So, great suggestions.
Well said. Thank you for your suggestion, ma'am. Thank you for your response to this councilman. Mr. Fraser?
Lee, I'm Lee Fraser, uh, Brothers Drive. Mayor Ford, when you went to talk to Ms. Wilson of the, uh, IRS, did the city manager go with you?
Let me correct you. I didn't go to, I spoke to Mrs. Wilson over the phone. I met with the, the state, uh, director, the state director. So, uh, we, we dealt with the top lady, Mrs. Wilson. Bless her heart, we'll be retiring soon. But to answer your question, no, uh, neither Mr. Smith nor city manager went with me. As you know, those two individuals are part of, they're being held personally accountable for that transaction and that particular situation. So, I took the initiative, uh, to make the arrangements for myself and the district attorney to pursue this.
So, your answer is when you talked to the IRS, the district attorney was with you each time?
I said, as I explained to you earlier, sir, the district attorney was on the conference call. I was in the office, he was in his office on the conference call. So, we had, as you know nowadays, many meetings I have on conference call. So, the DA, uh, was on the phone and we had the conference call.
Did you make the city manager aware that you was going to have that meeting?
Let me, no, I took the initiative as mayor of this city to do what I felt professionally the right thing to do, is to make contact with the Internal Revenue Service and get on top of this situation as soon as possible.
Okay, and the final question is...
Yes.
When you discussed the issue with the gentleman who just came to the mic from Mississippi, who, uh, was the city manager, that mean?
As a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Fraser, for the benefit of the, of the public here, this whole issue was not called to their attention, they called it to our attention. Not this gentleman came, but the president of the company, Brandon Comer, Comer called for an appointment.
Our attention included the city manager?
Sir, you want, let me just finish. Brandon Comer called for an appointment. Uh, not only did he greet me, but he also, also introduced it to the city manager and he had a chance to also share the information with him as well. City manager's here and he can attest to that.
Okay, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please. Bernie's.
My name is Bernie Schmack.
Bernie, Bernie's, that picture, mic down, and introduce mother, please.
Oh, this is my mother, Lou.
All right.
Well, I want to ask you this question, based on, but is there anybody that has loaned us the money to pay off the IRS?
Well, we're, her question is, Bernie's question is, is there anyone who can loan us the money?
To pay off the IRS.
Yes, what?
If we pay off the IRS, then we're going to have this interest and all of that as too. But we'll have a big bill that we have to pay, but you're going to have the interest that the IRS, they add every day, after day, after day. Has anybody ever owed IRS any money?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Well, you know when you owe the IRS, the best thing you can do is go borrow that money, pay them off and then pay the bank off. Okay, and I know it's a lot of money, like I said. I don't know if there's a government agency that will loan us the money. To me, it would be better if we paid them home.
Did you finish, Bernie? Did you finish your question?
I don't have the money.
Okay, well, we don't have it as well, but thank goodness, uh, let me have your attention. Uh, thank goodness municipalities do have the wherewithal and the ability to borrow. Uh, and easiest way to do that and the lowest interest way for cities to raise money to do what they need to do is to throw the bond, public bond. That's why it's, it's better to throw the bond than to go to a conventional bank, a regular bank and get a conventional loan. Plus, you can, uh, normally get more in a bond than you can. So, so just bear with us, we're working as hard as we can to pay our, to pay the Internal Revenue Service off as soon as we can, okay? I know you, the citizens want that and our employees want that and they're entitled to that. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm new to the area, so I'm not really familiar with a lot of things that go on here and just people. As a concerned citizen, also as a concerned parent, I am tribal leader. Is there a way our finance records available to the public as well as our budget and where we get those? And they're not available, why not? Because it is our money essentially.
You're new. Would you please identify, the, the normal, uh, procedure is to identify yourself and give your address for the record.
Okay. My name is Delia Phillips, 818 Highland Hills Street that needs repairs as well.
Thank you. Welcome. Now, uh, all of this is public information. Budget, we'll be happy to make you a copy of, uh, and it's here and all of the records. Accounts payable is here, so it's all public information. And like, just contact our city manager. And, um, as was indicated earlier, we hope to have a website up very soon and then we'll have agendas, budgets, all of that on webpage so that you can access it that way as well. But it's all public information.
All right, thank you.
And what's the street, let's make a note of it, needs we to repair?
Just choose one, really. I live on Highland Hill, but no matter which way I go, there is a street issue. So, and I think as we look at that, that's a compound issue for us here because if people can't get to work, they can't pay taxes, the cars tear up because our roads are so bad. I mean, I think we compound the problem, but yet we patchwork it and it just doesn't work out. I think right now, that's why I'm kind of interested where I'm going to join.
Yeah, we're, we're agreeing with you. Uh, yes, council, council lady?
Highland Hills is in District Three and, uh, I'd like you to attend our meetings once a month. And if you're not able to attend, I will certainly send you the updated information. We do have a grant that's going to actually make that part of District Three a very, 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 uh, beautiful, uh, community in District Three. So, I will give you the timeline. Uh, we've already left the bid, so we are in the process. Am I right, Mr. City Manager?
You're right.
So, just a little bit patience with us and you're going to have Highland Hills, South Mont Drive, that entire area along with, uh, some structures, uh, the lap day structures for that.
But that was part of my concern because I heard you talking about we're in a $9,000 deficit and I remember reading in paper a few months ago that there was a grant awarded for certain areas and that was a part of it. So, I was trying to figure out how we're going to wait for that.
It's a process and it's a process, so we have to follow the process.
We have to, we have to.
But the good thing is we got a grant.
Do we have a schedule time for this?
Yes, I have a timeframe. I'm looking for it. I'll share that with you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Davis, could you please?
I'm giving the mic.
Oh, TS, okay. Uh, yeah, we, 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 uh, have done an hour of this thus, thus far and, uh, we still have a hearing, but go ahead. Yes, TS.
Mr. Mayor, council person, manager, attorney, deputy clerk. I think, and this council is not aware of my continual demand or request for us to restructure the way that we have council meetings. Everything that I heard from the last hour and seven minutes that was supposed to be the business meeting and brief citizens' communication has, you know, it's gotten out of control. What we need to do is go back to what they originally tried to do. We need a meeting that has a work session on it and everything that was brought up tonight should have been in the work session. And then, on the following meeting night, it is a business agenda and the citizens have no input in that because they've already had their input. And your meetings go a whole lot faster and they'll be less contentious. Thank you.
And thank you, TS Williams, and, um, but I have learned to, uh, just go with the flow. Okay, I, whatever they want to do, it's right.
No.
All right. Okay, seriously, what, could you all please though, uh, we have been here a long time already and we, we haven't got into the agenda, so, uh, if it's okay, council members and citizens, if you all please, just let us move and take care of the business. And at the end, if anybody is still standing, uh, we'll, we'll open it up again. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Attorney?
Don't forget, uh, but we have to follow what the agenda says and the rules that the council has adopted.
Yes.
So, we've had, uh, most respectfully, sir, the citizens' consent.
You're right. All right, go ahead, county.
Mr. Attorney, we, uh, briefly discussing this idea of amending our rules in the future so that, if that's possible, so we can consider what, uh, Mr. Williams has said, Mayor and I, Councilor Moon, I want to talk with other councilmen about considering amending that so that we can have time at the front, limit that time to so many comments or so many minutes and then come back at the end, as the mayor has said. Is that possible? We could offer amendment toward that?
You mean at some other time or for tonight?
No, no, for some other time, moving forward, so that we don't have the problem in the future. We say, limit it to, it's no more than 30 minutes so that we don't interrupt the whole meeting and then proceed and then anything not addressed at that time could be addressed to citizens' concern at the end. So, we cover both what Mr. Williams has said and, uh, here vote day, Mr. Jackson said.
As the word says, you know, those things can be worked out, Mr. Councilman.
And actually, um, you can introduce that tonight because you remember that was your area. If you want to introduce it tonight, because we're talking about changing, it's an ordinance, it could be introduced tonight, that we, uh, make, you know, amend our meeting and then put it on the agenda, the vote on next go round, uh, during the section where, uh, we amend the agenda, which is, uh, coming up soon. Is that all right, Mr. Attorney?
Uh, well, we adopted a resolution, adopting our, our, our rules of, of our, but at any rate, whatever you all want to do, let's, uh, let's move this, please. Um, shall we go to the approval of agenda? Uh, Mr. City Manager, I have two or three other little items I wanted, I have that list here. Can you mention those?
Uh, we had a couple resolutions I wanted to put in, um, for, I guess. It's Maddie Brown lost her daughter and there were a couple. And then Drew Simpson.
You got all, you just have two resolutions.
Okay. All right, so I want to add though.
And bereathing resolutions.
Okay.
Maddie Brown and Drew Edwards Simpson.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other items you'd like to add? If not, the chairman, pay a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you also have, uh, discussion on Exit 38 and Tuskegee landfill.
Okay.
Also, that's a key.
Okay. I won't say much about those tonight since the time has gone so far, but I do want the citizens to know that we're working on Exit 38. We had an excellent meeting with all of the, um, property owners that we are proposing because our plans are to, um, work with those property owners to develop 38 hotel, restaurant, service station, retail outlets, so that, uh, we'll have a nice intersection there. Uh, but in the meantime, while we're doing that, there are three things we wanted to do. One, get the property owners to clean up their property out there now, so, you know, cut the grass, clean up now. Number two, stop making that a truck stop. That's the front door to our city and, uh, we want to ask the police department, the city manager, the police department to enforce the law, no trucks, trucks overnight. the law, no trucks, trucks, overnight trucks.
Uh, the next one, we already have, that's the Clean City Committee. I would like to see it improved more. Uh, one of the reasons is because the Clean City can do a lot. Uh, I heard tonight, I think, uh, Councilman Hager brought up, wanna know what to do with, uh, refrigerators and, uh, computers and TVs and things. I'm standing here before, I have connection that I can bring back to Tuskegee to be picked up. I did that two years ago. We didn't get very much turnout, okay? I'm in charge of Committee Montgomery for getting rid of your own checks and papers that you want destroyed. I can bring that into, if you want me to bring it in. Those kind of things, if we work together, we can get a lot done. The next one is the Neighborhood Watch. Neighborhood Watch, I think we have some getting on forward now. Uh, but, in the Neighborhood Watch, if the police and the workers of the Neighborhood Watch, we can have more eyes, I know we're short on personnel in the police department, but the more people you have on the streets that are writing down tag numbers, seeing something illegal, speaking for trash town, we can also do that. The next one is Transportation Committee. We need that in this community, a Transportation Committee. The next one is the Industrial Development Committee. We need that. Here's the next one that we need real bad, that's the Tourism Committee, getting committed together to bring more tourism to Tuskegee. The next one is the Housing Committee. One minute, okay, then I just have to wait until the other part. The next one is the Housing Committee. This one here, I would love to see.
Three minutes.
Three minutes up, okay, but let me say this, but then I have to wait until the other thing. I'd like to see the city have a leadership academy for this city here where we can have people understanding exactly what's going on together. And I'll bring others up later.
Thank you so much. Next.
City council members and, uh, the staff, Mr. City Manager, I want to ask a couple of questions about the agenda. I see on here where you have a, um, public vote on a form of government and I'm wondering, it says for discussion item, uh, however, I'm wondering, is there gonna be an opportunity for a public hearing on that particular matter? And also on item number three under discussion items, the one percent increase in sales tax. Um, so that you can give the citizens an opportunity to, uh, voice our opinions about those particular matters, not within the three minute time that is allocated for now, but for when you're going to consider those measures. Uh, as we probably all know, the one percent sales tax is gonna affect the poor and middle class people of this community more so than the wealthy. And I think that definitely can look at, how can we get the wealthy of this community to pay its fair share versus taxing the people who are poor and middle class? On the ordinance that, uh, you're looking at, uh, having Frasier Lanier, uh, to be considered for the one point one million dollars, uh, I'm aware that the ninety thousand dollar payment is already in reserve, so it's not a big issue that you will miss this December third, first bid bind. However, I think it's important that we give the opportunity to the other lenders, particularly for the lead in this community, as you said, you'd like to see happen. First Tuskegee Bank and PNC Bank both have come forward, I understand, wanting to give a bid or an opportunity to be considered for this matter. And also in the ordinance, it appears that Section Three gives the sole authority to the mayor to decide whether or not to accept, to go forward with this bond issue, and I think that is an abridgement of the rights of this council to put the sole authority in one individual when you all should be deciding on behalf of all of us. And then lastly, the hundred dollars that I understand will be given, or is proposed to be given as a one-time adjustment to the employees, how much will this cost, uh, the city, it, us taxpayers? And is it in the present budget? And I suppose you can deal with those questions when we come to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Attorney. Uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, in the, uh, in the ordinance on the bond issue, uh, where did you give the sole authority to the mayor to do anything? Uh, I did notice that that's the way the other one was constructed, but I'm not interested in having sole authority in doing anything. This issue should be brought, this issue should be brought before the full council and as a group, we vote on it as a council. Uh, what is, what is your thought, Mayor?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, when the ordinance is presented, we'll ensure that it says council instead of mayor.
Okay, alright, great. And secondly, uh, the, uh, practical cost for the one-time cost of living increase for the city employees, uh, will be about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, one of the things that we are working hard to do in this administration is make sure that whatever happens on the utility board side also happens on the general government side. All of our employees are important and we want harmony. If the utility employees get it, the, the general government employees should get it. All the employees are important. The fellows on the sanitation truck will pick up the garbage, the trash, they should get it just like those who work in the utilities department. Uh, it's, uh, it's the least we can do for our employees. Employees right now are taking a fifteen percent cut, uh, in their salaries across the board because of the IRS challenge that we have. And that's one of the, uh, things that we, uh, are moving on as fast as possible. We met with the Internal Revenue Service, uh, myself, uh, the District Attorney, uh, as well as our Finance Director and, and City Manager, and I can give a full report tonight in terms of where we are. But one of the things that we wanna do is not only negotiate that internal revenue debt down as far as possible, because when we met with Internal Revenue Service, we found out that we had a three point nine million dollar indebtedness, but all that amount, one point two million were penalties. That is the area that we propose to focus our, our negotiations upon, because we know that Internal Revenue Service does have some flexibility when it comes to the penalties and even interest. So, uh, one of the reasons why we did not rush in, majority of the council did not rush into, uh, the other bond issue is because we wanted to take time to see how far down we could negotiate the cost of the indebtedness, and that is what we are in the process of doing. Uh, that bond issue, once it is completed and before we, uh, select anyone, the council will select whoever is gonna do the bond issue, will invite anyone in the field who's interested in bidding or submitting a proposal, to submit a proposal to, uh, this city government, and we will, uh, evaluate and come up with one who we feel can give us the best arrangement. What I do wanna speak publicly on tonight is that Frasier Lanier, though they've served our city for years, does not have any exclusive, uh, right to do business with our city. And I also want to, uh, thank you, my friend, he's still a young man. I also want to clear the fact that I do not have a personal relationship with Frasier Lanier. Some have tried to circulate that, uh, that opinion. Uh, I have served in the securities industry as a consultant when I was not mayor, and of course have worked Frasier Lanier and other securities industries when I was not mayor, but I have no, uh, connection with Frasier Lanier. And so I wanna make that clear from an ethical standpoint. My conscience is clear, so they will be considered like everyone else, and we are going to make a special effort to make sure that local vendors, whoever they are, have an opportunity to bid for city business. Uh, one of the reasons why, another reason why on the bond issue, we wanted to take our time to try to negotiate it down, because we want to settle the Internal Revenue Service indebtedness and we also want to take this fifteen percent cut off of our city employees. It is unfair for them to have to shoulder, shoulder that burden. Uh, they should not have to do that, and, uh, we are certainly going to make sure that, uh, we address that issue as soon as possible. So again, to answer the question, the least we can do for the employees for Christmas is to give each one of them a hundred dollars. Uh, wish we could do more, uh, but if the, uh, the utility board employees, and that was already proposed by the utilities board, if they are going to do that for their employees and city government employees should be treated fairly and equal in this essence, but about twelve thousand. Uh, Chair now entertain, uh, anyone else who has any comments?
Hello, if, if one, my name is Will Schrodens, and, um, I have a company that I've, that's, that's in, in this, in, in embassy, uh, called Schrodens Solutions. And, um, right now my company has two phases, one's law enforcement, one is, uh, quality control. And I've been retained by some Tuskegee locals, um, that, to, uh, to assist the legal administration in their efforts to, to, uh, bring, uh, Tuskegee, uh, into accordance with, uh, safe road streets and community and, uh, and adequate recreation facilities. Um, I've been under weather for, for a week or two, um, I had a, I had a forced birthday celebration and, um, so now I'd just like to congratulate all, all you guys for being elected and being re-elected. And, and, um, I'm ready to sit you off and, and enjoy each, each one of your dishes to make certain that, you know, that we don't leave any, uh, community, uh, citizens, uh, out of the improvements. And I think it's about, good?
Thank you, hope you're feeling better.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks for getting that chief call. Are there others? Three-minute comments, feel free.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, City Attorney. Uh, my comments are not gonna take long, I just wanna reiterate again the point that I made last time about the agenda, uh, where I requested that there be a spot deserved at the end of the agenda for citizens' input so that anything that were to come up during the course of a meeting could be addressed by citizens before the next council meeting. Thank you.
Good. And we accept that in the spirit offered, if you notice, normally, even though it's not on the agenda, uh, we do make that a lie, and, uh, we can formally put it on the, could have two, uh, if the council so desires. Davis?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, yes, I have a concern about, when you look at the interest in the ordinance that are already on the IRS debt, uh, and the fact that it's gonna be continued to the compound, how much do you think you're really gonna save when we already owe the attorneys that did it first, uh, bond issue, somewhere around fifty thousand? And we're still paying this ten thousand dollars a month, and at least ten thousand in interest? I mean, as that continues to add up, it begins to eat into whatever savings you're seeing that you are going to realize. And so my question to you is, how much do you expect to really save? And then with all these expenditures, with the city already and not you, the black, where's your money gonna come from?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'm glad, um, that you, you brought that issue before us again. Listen to me, citizens, please. Uh, you're talking about your tax dollars. Here's an opportunity for the city to put this issue behind us once and for all. And by taking time, I want to say to the citizens, uh, I felt proud of my tax dollars when I was able to go to the Internal Revenue Service, meet with the top official, who was an African-American lady. When I walked in the office, there was a picture of Barack Obama hanging on the wall. And an African-American who was a security man said, "We had a real struggle with these folks down here," they didn't wanna put his picture up. Well, I can tell you, the lady who's in charge of Internal Revenue Service, uh, for the Mill District of Alabama is a professional lady. She took more than two hours with me to go through every payment from two thousand seven to two thousand twelve that had been made by the city of Tuskegee. She highlighted those that were late, she highlighted those that did not have the correct amount paid. In other words, she went through it line item by line item, and then she totaled it up. Out of the three point nine million dollars, one point two million were penalties. And the other, uh, amount that was extremely high was the interest that had accrued. Now, the penalty, that's the area that we planned to sit down and negotiate with Internal Revenue Service on. She didn't have to do that, but she did. And second, the next time I went back, the District Attorney could not be there, but he was on the conference call, and E. Paul Jones did an outstanding job by letting her know that the reason why the bond issue was held up by the council was not necessarily because the council wanted to do that, to do that, uh, just because we were in new administration. But the judge, the circuit judge ruled from the bench, one, that the bond issue, he was not going to approve that bond issue going forward. And secondly, the judge stated from the bench that the city government should make a greater reference on behalf of its taxpayers to get the debt down. Why pay three point nine million dollars? Why borrow at five million dollars and your debt is listed at only three point nine million? Why don't you try to meet with Internal Revenue Service and negotiate it down? It was a judge who said that he knew of instances where other municipalities and agencies had been able to negotiate with the Internal Revenue Service and get indebtedness down and some cases excused or exempt. So the point is, it was a judge who said that, one, he was not gonna go along with the bond issue until a, a greater reference had been made to reduce the indebtedness, and secondly, he wanted the District Attorney to be involved in the process. And so we are simply following the court's mandate in terms of how to handle this matter. Now, the second point I want the citizens of this city to know, and you ought to be proud of the fact, that if you have a problem with Internal Revenue Service as a citizen, there is a division of the Internal Revenue Service that is called the Citizens as a that is called the Citizens Advocate Division. What that division does, just like HUD has a division that advocates for citizens if you have a housing problem with HUD, that division becomes an advocate for you. They are some, though they are a part of the Internal Revenue Service, they are a neutral. Their responsibility is to look out for citizens to make sure that they are treated fairly by the Internal Revenue Service. And so we have, we've written a letter, and we want to make a copy available to the press and to the public. City manager has a copy. We wrote a letter to the advocacy division stating, one, that Tuskegee has, like most municipalities, had a hardship situation with the economy, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, we pleaded our case. They are located in Birmingham. We plan, just like I went to Montgomery, to meet with them. The Internal Revenue Service says, "We'll come to you all." I said, "No, you don't have to come to us. We owe you. We'll come to you." We plan to go to Birmingham and meet with them and plead our case. And when we go, we are going to take the, the district attorney will be there. I'll be there. Our financial people will be there. Our lawyer will be there. And we are going to fight on behalf of the citizens of this town to get the best deal we can from Internal Revenue Service. Now, once we get the deal, once we get the amount down, and I am convinced we will get it down, because the same lady, Mrs. Wilson, who helped us back in 2004 when we inherited a similar situation, set up a plan of action for us to work, and we just didn't keep that plan. That's what happens, and it accrued over the years. You all know what happened. It's public information. But the point is, Mr. Davis, yes, some interest is accruing. But let me also inform the citizens and the press what happened during that meeting with the Internal Revenue Service. They pointed out to us that there were three small overdue tax bills that we had, which totaled about three thousand dollars. And off the record, they said, obviously, it makes a better impression if you take care of those old, small, even though they are small, they are old. So during this month, we will take care of those. It's about three thousand dollars. The city manager and finance director can give you the precise figure. And then the next point is, the council was under the impression, in particular during the campaign, the public was under the impression that the last administration was corrupt on its obligations to the Internal Revenue Service. That was not totally correct. For the Internal Revenue Service, they requested the city to make one lump sum payment of a hundred thousand dollars. The city was not in a financial position to do that. And so there was an indebtedness on that. While the city was paying its monthly seventeen thousand dollars a month commitment as a part of a payment plan, it was not covered on a hundred thousand. So when I contacted Internal Revenue Service, the first thing they said to me when they pulled the city of Tuskegee's record is, "The city is in default. You have not kept your commitment." And so I immediately informed the city manager and the finance director, the city attorney, the district attorney. And this month, the city manager is going to see that and the finance director that we do pay that one hundred thousand dollars during the month of December. So it means that before we go into negotiations, we will be covered on everything. No need of going in the negotiations if you have not kept your commitment on the existing commitment that they made. Mr. City Manager, did I miss anything? Am I, as you remember, and the finance director is here too. You want to come up, Mr. Finance Director, if he is here?
You did.
Okay.
Mistake one thing.
Okay.
We were certainly aware of a hundred thousand dollar payment, and it wasn't due until like August. And so we had already made contact with IRS. The finance director already talked to them and worked out an arrangement to pay that hundred thousand dollars.
And we, this month, what the council needs to know is whether or not this is going to be paid this month and will be covered.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Presently, we owe them sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, from the, of the hundred.
Of the hundred.
Yeah.
We're going to pay them another twenty this week. And we're going to negotiate the other forty to see if we can pay that later on in the month.
Okay, so you are working on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, but the answer to Mr. Davis's question, we, we know that there's some interest accruing, but overall, our goal is to try to get the debt down as much as we can before we go into the bond market. Okay, next question.
Hold. Yeah, sorry. I said it's twenty thousand. Next week.
Use your mind.
This week, sorry. This week.
And that's what, as you can see, the city. Yeah. And one of the reasons, oh, I forgot to mention, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Unless, oh, Councilman Moon, Council Lady Moon.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It is my understanding that Mrs. Wilson said if we stay covered, we can negotiate the penalties and interest.
Good.
And I love that meeting. It was my understanding.
You understand.
And it was my understanding that council was under the impression that we were covered. Now, sometimes you have to negotiate here and there. And I, it is my understanding that because of the economy, that is what you're doing. Our revenue didn't sustain our ability to pay on time.
That's true. We had three payroll.
And you were short those months on our payment. Now, with our debt ceiling, when we borrow, when we go and refinance that, if this is what the council decides to do, what would that do to our debt?
Uh...
Refinancing.
Well, you know, the debt in the hills, twenty percent of the assessed property made. So what happens? We subtract that twenty percent. We subtract that debt that's outstanding already, which is the general obligation warrant is one of those debts. The gas tax warrants is another one. And the note against PNC Bank is another one. But our debt was added to that debt that is awesome. So we are in excess of our debt. Except I don't mind that.
Did he answer your question?
But I can give you a, I can give you a total number, lady.
Now, the bond issue that we're proposing to finance, we're not proposing to increase the bottom line from what the original principle was when we did it. For the benefit of the taxpayers, the indebtedness we're talking about is a one point one million dollar bond indebtedness that we did in 2005 or whenever. And the purpose of it was to fix streets. This indebtedness is insured, or this indebtedness will be repaid from the gasoline tax fund. And those dollars can only be used for street work. Street work, street staff, and administration, et cetera. We primarily use those funds to fix streets in the downtown police department. How y'all pass on with service and utilities?
I talk.
Okay.
What is maybe, would you probably aware of this? And they get in their cars, make their left, and that's the main interest. We can get this. Or about, what you're talking about, fixing the street right here.
Right here.
Get right here. Right here, we'll be stood on the bikes and that. That's the worst. We think, we don't worry. And we've already had any contact with contractors. Contractors will work with us on that project. We're going to actually move some last fall. Okay. And that's why we do what I'm saying. There's going to be some work we got to do.
I've heard from one or two citizens, I just happen to remember tonight with last citizens, said some language I can't repeat in here. They have to hit their car.
But we hope to get it done, Chris.
Okay. Like, we just talked about that today, right? As a matter of few minutes ago. The county set their, their plan is back up right here. But they need us to pay the money ahead of time, you know, to get the ass off before they crank it up. And the city manager, we're going to do what? We talked about it. You know, we talked about, you're going to let the, well, there are a couple options, you know. That's why we're looking at this bond issue refinancing in hopes of generating about three hundred thousand dollars, which would give us some money to do street work. We've got some serious ones like over there for something like ambition. This is why, yeah, I knew you were going, you were ready to, just, just ready for that one, Marson. But over there and all over town, there are places that need to be fixed. About when it comes to streets, you all know that. But the manager was going to write the utility board and let them know, and remind both of us on the utility board that last year, there was some, the utility board did a fine job of making money to help the city on street paving. And he'd like for them to also keep that in mind this year as well. That's what we talked about. So, street paving, it's a top priority. Go ahead, I know it's right here.
We're working on it. Turn.
It's not going to work.
Turn.
I would like to know, do we have a truck? I know we once had a truck that would come down low on the lake and cut those tall trees and weeds close to the water in the current, going around by Par Washington's house. Do you have, do you have that truck?
We use our side cutter now when we cut the water. So, it actually has a arm on it, reaches out and cuts it, cuts down the water edge. So we still use it. We have used it around the lake.
But we have, that hasn't been cut.
Well, there may be some areas around the lake that you can't hit to, particularly salt when you're in a certain area. But we use it to cut the, and we have used it in the past.
But that has been cut. I remember when Mr. Robinson was cutting, he cut all of that. I was wondering if that can be cut.
Well...
The lake looks nice, except for those, there's a couple areas like that. You know, tall trees almost, right at the water.
I've taken up a look at it. When Mr. Robinson cut it, of course, he put a lot of his manpower in there. They could cut a lot of it. But we'll look at it and see what the problem is.
And also, when will they come over on the lake to pick up some trash? We have some trash that's been laying there near, take us over there near Fred Gray's. What's your street?
Lake D Drive.
Lake D Drive. Been there for months. All the way down the side, it just looks bad, especially during the Christmas season now. If someone can come over and... A lot of trimming took place over there, but it hasn't been picked up.
We'll take one.
Yes, ma'am. Council Lady Moon.
Thank you so much.
It's right here, if you can, Council Lady, right here, if you can finish.
Um, I, Mr. Adams is here, and I know the Clean Cities Committee had talked about a contest between the districts. They were going to give a plaque or a certificate to the best decorated district of the Christmas season and also storefronts downtown Tuskegee. So I don't know if that's still on the burger or not. I asked Mr. Adams if he could please come forward and take about three minutes and let us know if we're still going to do that. I saw Mr. Adams come in, and I don't know if that was still on the burger at the last meeting or not. Did they talk about that? Each one of us would cruise our communities and our districts and see which house was the best decorated. And we'd give out a certificate to that family. I thought that would be a good friendly competition among the districts and also with downtown storefronts.
Yes, we have, we talked about, we want to say that for us. We want to do what we want to do in the office. Not only set in downtown area, but we want to do the community-wide best area in the community district, we want to do that. But the major problem that we have is that people are not using their trash cans and stuff like this. Just last weekend, we had a major cleanup on District One and we did Fourth Street and the whole major area. And I was back out there today picking up mattresses, leaves, and beds and stuff. We need to put some signs out there, and we need to start letting employees start controlling that area and get some fire.
So it's fast, it's clean, it's big up.
Fast, we pick up and clean up. They come back and ask. I have a mayor telling me that it's not our citizens that's down there. We are people from out of town that drop that trash down the city. And we need to, we need to do something like that, Chris. So we, we need to do something about that. We need to do something. We need to find some signs and put over there, and they have to find if someone's calling trash bags, that we need to find.
Is it just that specific area that people are using as a dumping zone? I mean, is that something that has been going on? That people are just taking their stuff to that area and dump it out?
Well, there's not only that area. They're using the old chicken ground area. They're using Washington Avenue area, which I'm in Washington Avenue area. And Benson Avenue. And the major part that we had, when we was coming in off of Eighty-Five, off of Franklin Avenue, they cleaned up that Washington Avenue and going down to Three Drive. They just dumped a whole lot of mattresses down there. And we hoped that we could try to get the truck back up on when our major cleanup and do a lot of picking. I know the trucks died, but that wasn't what you call it. The question was, yes, we will be doing judging and things for the Christmas holiday, for the best district, best Halloween, and purchase that, this magazine might have fifty dollars. Flat, ladies. We did, we did. But we need the citizens to work up. You know, school is out there. They just feel for us here. It's not going home for us.
Mr. Adams, as the Director of the Clean Cities Committee, your recommendation to...
Mr. Adams, as the Director of the Clean Cities Committee, your recommendation to try to prevent this dumping in the future would be to put some signs that might, you know, include the fine or littering?
Yeah.
And Mr. Davis, is would that be a possibility to put in those specific areas?
We do put a lot, uh, all the time, so we decide to look at those areas with it.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know this guy looked like that.
No. Yeah, but, but a lot, but a lot of this is, is not necessarily because we don't have the land here.
I know it's not typical, but some people will take their stuff to a landfill and get it. If they got it all, all my hands.
Take it off this side.
That would help out.
I assume we deal with that.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Councilman, um, if we possibly publicize what you do with mattresses, TVs, that kind of thing? Because, did you hear me?
That's, that's, okay, Mr. Manager and City Councilman, we probably publicize along with the council what the citizens do with old mattresses, uh, refrigerators, TVs, electronics, because I saw that same thing on a county road not far outside of the city limits, and it wasn't there two weeks ago. I think what is happening, some citizens, where they don't have any place to put something or not for where, is dumping anywhere. Because when you clean out your house, your garage, or whatever, you look for something to do, you can't, you don't want to keep it there because finally they're cleaning it out, and they look for anywhere they can dump it. So, not only put up signs, I think that's the key thing to get out of the council meeting, but also we hope that we can get with the county and say, this is what we do with refrigerators, old TVs, old electronics. Uh, I ran the same problem at a church, we clean out a basement, I guess you wanna give old TVs, which look like about twenty years old, I know what to do with it. So, I think the citizens may need a direction as to where do we take old TVs, old appliances, old mattresses, because we certainly can't put them in the dumpster or in, or in garbage containers. So, if we could just publicize something in conjunction with the county to direct us where to take those things and make them dump.
Okay.
Proceed, council members, um, any other, any other points you'd like to raise, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir, other than the fact, I, I do agree with Mr. Whitehead. I think some of those problems will be solved as we landville back up in operation. Council will offer some option for those citizens that wanna get rid of city too.
Council members, you, you have a resolution regarding the bond refinancing. It's on the agenda. Uh, if there are any questions prior to the council meeting, we'd be happy to entertain those. What we did was, at the council meeting, we decided instead of taking action the last time, instead, uh, appointed committee with Councilman Lee and myself for the purpose of interviewing investment bankers and, and meeting with the financial community of our city. And we did do that, uh, we notified First Estate Bank, asked them to bring together those financial persons who have been involved in, uh, the IRS bond issue. We contacted PNC, Mr. Bobby Davis, that bank, and asked them if they would follow. We contacted the credit union and Mr. Russo Minifill, who did come. We contacted Fraser Lanier. We contacted, the city manager contacted, um, people from the industry. And we did have that committee meeting. Uh, we met with those who did come, and, uh, tonight we want to, uh, put this on the agenda. And I wanted to just put it before the council to see if you had any questions. Councilman Lee, uh, you may want to make any...
I just had a question.
We're just having a working session now.
On the agenda of the item, it says unanimous consent required?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to, to be clear, um, perhaps maybe, you know, we haven't had a chance as a full council to talk about this. I know, you know, I've talked about it individually with a couple members of the council, but perhaps maybe we should, you know, enter an executive session and talk specifically about that issue. And, you know, about the presentation that was presented to us by the groups and everything.
Okay, that's fine. And the other option, if, uh, if it's not common consent or unanimous consent, we can schedule another council meeting on Thursday of this week. Um, as I've indicated earlier, this is the season, uh, we're coming up to the end of the year. We've got some pressing things that we need to do, and some of them are time sensitive. And so, honorable council members, it may necessitate some special meetings, some working sessions. Citizens elected us to work, and, uh, so I want to thank you all for having demonstrated thus far your willingness to do that. Uh, but we could go into executive session, or we can discuss it here, it doesn't make any difference, whatever. Uh, it is time sensitive from the standpoint that in January, we have, if we do nothing, uh, and continue to pay the interest rates we're paying, uh, we got a payment due, the annual payment is due in January twenty thirteen. That's the first day of approximately ninety thousand dollars. Uh, one of the reasons why this is a concern is because in our last financial report, you noted that the city was in a deficit position. And it's really not going to be until, well, after the first of the year when you begin to get your, have a lower taxes to really bill up your revenue. So, we've got some pressing financial challenges facing us. But in this particular instance, uh, we then were at first, um, you've got a ninety thousand dollar commitment that you have to meet. Uh, number two, who knows what interest rates are going to do, uh? And, uh, thirdly, is we have a chance to get about three hundred thousand dollars at least from this refinancing, which we certainly do need for street paving and street work. So, those are some of the issues. So, uh, we can, uh, address it here or later.
One, uh, one question, Mr. Mayor, second. Um, was that a finance presence, uh, obviously at the...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we had. We hear from him, yes. Yeah, the city manager was there, the, uh, financial director, uh, council member Lee, who was chairing the committee and yours truly. Um, and we had even a local person, Russo Minifill, was there and he spoke. He gave his opinion in terms of, I don't know if he's here tonight, but indicated, uh, it's something that was a no-brainer, something that we ought to really take advantage of. But at any rate, we, uh, but we contacted people, that's the important thing is, we didn't just have Fraser Lanier there.
Right, there were other ones that were present. And I was, I was actually looking forward to hearing, uh, presentations from, from other groups as well, um, specifically, you know, local entities that might, would at least like to propose and, and take a part in this. Um, but none were present at the time.
At what point did we notify any of the entities, the city managers?
There were, both, uh, PNC Bank and, uh, wanted to present, but they just couldn't make it on that particular day. They have requested to have an opportunity to make a presentation, uh, but they were not available the day that meeting was, was held.
Was there a, a response from First Estate Bank?
They also indicated, uh, that they would be willing to consider, but it was at the counter last minute from both, both of these entities, and they didn't have time to pull their teams together.
Yeah, that was my concern, Mr. Mayor. You know, pray we can do it ahead of time, and hopefully we give everyone a chance, like, and, you know, the citizens will be a better comparability, um, opportunity for others and for the, uh, the best rates. Uh, the more time we give everyone in the process, I think, better opportunity, have a better rate, a better...
Now, we, let's make sure we clear now. We decided as a council, uh, that we wanted to have this meeting. So, Fraser Lanier was notified as well as the others about that particular meeting. And I don't know what else you want us to do, uh, but there's no problem. I mean, we can, and, 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 and it's, it's time sensitive because January the first, to do a bond issue, you know, it's time sensitive. It's not a major bond issue, really. If you all don't want to do it, then, you know, it's fine. Or if you want to have another meeting on, or we can do it in the executive session. It's actually six o'clock now, but, go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
Just one thing.
Oh, the attorney was there too, it's on.
Just one thing on the, uh, executive session.
Yeah.
We could only for the executive session to discuss good name and character.
Right.
Or dedication.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, we understand that.
Which we could do that.
We understand that.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, we understand that. So, whatever the council wants to do on these, after, um, like President Obama in his first debate, uh, it was kind of rocky, but from that point on, whatever comes, let it come on.
Uh, the, the finance though, that report from that presentation, um, they presented a plan that would refinance, um, the tax warrants under the current interest rates, which are a lot lower than the rates that, uh, when it was originally set up. That was, I guess, another reason, uh, you know, that it's time sensitive. A lot of financial experts are anticipating rates to go up at the beginning of the year. Um, I'm not a financial expert, um, by any means, but just to, I wanted to let the council and the public know those were the, the major findings from, uh, from that report. I mean, it would also provide us with, um, some upfront cash, uh, which, you know, I think we kind of said that we need some cash for, for road improvements.
Not, not kind of.
Well, we do, we do need cash for road improvements. Um, so that was, that was their presentations, um, and like I said, I, I really was looking forward to hear from other entities as well. If it's possible to still hear from them and still meet the time sensitive, you know, requirements, you know, I would, I would like to do that.
Well, six o'clock, pardon my clock, we hereby call this council meeting to order. We want to say good evening to all of you, and ask that our chaplain, uh, we have a team of chaplains, but our, our premier chaplain, uh, Reverend Leonard, come and lead us in the invocation. Let us all stand forth, the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We hereby call this council meeting December fifty-eleven, putting away a warning.
Let's all bow here to you, will. Eternal Father, the Father of our Lord and Savior Jesus the Christ. We come at this appointed time thanking you for the bountifulness of all of your goodness. We thank you for your mercy, your grace. We thank you for an opportunity to come and mingle our voices together and pray you peace, Lord, upon this, this group and upon our city. And ask, Lord, that you let the press of peace speak in our hearts and our minds and our soul during this Christmas season. For, for truly you are the reason for the season. And Father, we thank you for a city, a city that we can come and, and, and share our thoughts and our ideas with each other in peace and harmony. And ask that, Lord, that you would give us that spirit, that spirit that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast, recognizing that we are fortunate to have a city such as Tuskegee and a city where, number one, people come to build ideas and build on dreams, so that those dreams might be able to flow and soar. We ask of your blessings, Lord, upon our council, council persons, upon our mayor, upon our lawyer, upon our manager, and ask that you would guide them and let the wisdom that you've given them guide us, that we might be the greatest good, as George Washington Calvin said, "The greatest good to the greatest number of people." It's in the name of Jesus the Christ we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Johnny Ford.
Here.
Councilman Lawrence Higood Junior. Councilman Frank Crispell, the leader second.
Here.
Councilwoman Allen Whitehead. Councilwoman Georgia Moon.
Here.
Okay, uh, please note that all of the members of the council are present, and we do have a quorum. We will now go to our citizens' communications. Uh, Mr. City Manager, if you would time, um, the comments for three minutes. You'd be our official timer, and at this time, well, any comments, particularly if you have any written comments that you'd like to present to us for consideration or any verbal ones, and, uh, we'll proceed. Harrington, you don't have to get up, we can, uh, just bring that mic to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Manager, and those assisting. I noticed on the agenda tonight, there is an open, a public hearing regarding the old bus station. Is it on the agenda for tonight?
Oh, yes, in terms of a, um, beverage license.
Yes.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Should I make my comment now or at that time?
No, no, you can do it for now.
Just make it three minutes.
Oh, well, I, I've timed it.
No problem.
An appeal to Tuskegee City Council for historic preservation. One of the highlights of this evening's meeting, the Tuskegee City Council meeting is scheduled, a public hearing to address the request for an alcohol beverage license. The request specifically relates to the GS Package Store, two oh three Martin Luther King Highway. The site is recognized as the old...
Mr. Mayor, uh, Dr. Harrington.
I'm sorry.
Please forgive me, but, uh, because this properly should be in the public hearing, because it sounds like it's either going to be a comment for or against.
Yes, should I hold it?
It should be held for the hearing.
I, I, I certainly respect, and will hold my comment until that time. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You notice whatever, whatever they want to do, it's fine with me. So, you want to do, no problem. Next. Don't efforts. Classmate.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Attorney.
Yes, sir.
City Manager, citizens. Uh, tonight, and I think I pass the opportunity to each one of the, uh, council people, but I want to read some of these committees that I would like to see. Not all of them, but, uh, we can pick one we want out to look into. And these committees have something to do with the overall city. Uh, the first one is the Public Works Committee, okay? And the Public Works Committee, we know the Public Works look at ways of paving streets, uh, cleaning up lots and things of that nature. The next one would be a park and a recreation committee. Now, I'm understanding that some, the city has some of these committees already, but I have not, I went back five years and I have not heard any, anything like that. Special Recreation Committee. Now, I proposed in the Recreation Committee, since cities don't have enough money and the county don't have enough money, why don't we just join and make a Recreation Committee for the city and county? And look at some ways that we can create some things for the, for the, uh, citizens and also for the young adults. And look at some ways that we can create some things for the, for the citizens and also for the young adults.